I am. I'm calling the special meeting of the town council of June 9, 2021 quarter. Do we have a motion for? Is there a second? Is there anyone else nominated? Any other nominations? Nominations are closed and I was. Can you hear me now? All right, we just select, I was just selected moderator of the meeting. We are now going to receive a motion for town meeting clerk.
Nominate Sue King for clerk of the town.
Is, is there any other nomination for clerk of the meeting? Is there any other nomination for clerk of the meeting? Any other nomination? No other nominations. Sue is the meeting clerk after nominations have closed. I am going to read the warning of meeting. The legal voters of the town of Watertown and those entitled to vote in town meeting are hereby warned and notified of a special town meeting to be held on June 9, 2021 at Watertown High School Auditorium, 324 French Street, Watertown at 7:00 PM to consider an appropriation in the amount of $2,834,608 to the Board of Education fiscal year 2021 budget for unanticipated coverages and special education costs and COVID-19 related expenses. Anyone wishing to vote at the special town meeting must attend in person. To attend the town meeting virtually, there is a link that's posted in the notice. And there is a phone number for those that are in listen only mode. Anyone wishing to provide comment for the meeting may do so by emailing towncouncil@watertownct.org or by mail to the Watertown Town Council, 61 Ethel Lake Road, Watertown, and must be received by 2:00 PM today. If you require a translator or accommodation for hearing impairment or other accommodation, contact the town of Watertown at 860-945-5255 dated Watertown, the 4th day of June 2021. Mark Raymo, manager. I am going to turn the meeting over to the superintendent of schools and ask that she provide us with an explanation of the amount before us. Can you hear me now? Okay, I have to actually put my mouth right on the microphone. I'm going to ask the superintendent to give us a presentation that will provide information on the cost amount.
Thank you. All right, and the presentation will be up in just a moment. So tonight, we're here for an FY21 budget appropriation from the town of Watertown. Last year in the summer, in preparation for the FY21 academic year, the Board of Education and schools, along with municipalities across the entire state and across the entire nation ultimately, worked to create COVID-19 related budgets to be able to open school. Right out of the gate, although various restrictions and COVID-19 mitigation strategies were required and mandated of school districts, there really were no confirmed streams of funding, although many heard talks about FEMA funding or government relief plans that were being talked about. So with that, Watertown Public Schools did exactly what they were required to do, and they made a plan that included the resources to meet the COVID-19 regulations. Mike, are we able to get the presentation? Through the best way possible, plans were shared, as were the costs through Board of Ed meetings and minutes and things of that nature. And at the same time, Watertown also experienced several unanticipated special education-related costs after last year's budget was approved. I'm just going to wait a moment while we get that slide to come up. There we go, so we can go right to the next slide there. Thank you, and so the town and school district welcomed several families with children requiring special education services. And as I've mentioned before, in previous meetings, special education services for children who are outplaced can range anywhere from $60,000 to $200,000 per child. With that, even with just fewer than 10 new families, the unanticipated special education costs quickly added up. And as it's always a school district's responsibility and moral imperative to program for all of our children to the best of our ability to do right for our students, we did exactly that. So based on these very two exceptional situations, the Watertown Public Schools is projected, and Mike, we can go to the next slide, to end this fiscal year with a deficit of $2,834,608. I would like to share with you where those costs come from in specific. And we can go right to the next slide of there as well, Mike. We do have federal and state funds and grants over the next couple of years that will be coming to school districts with very strict parameters on how we can use those funds. And I would like to note that those funds are not only being made available to school districts, but also to towns, so on and so forth, to help with costs like the ones that I can share with you this evening. We can go to the next slide there. So the first bucket, which was ultimately around those unanticipated special education-related costs, come to a total of $1,380,430. You can see that the three main areas where we are seeing these dollar amounts are in special education tuition, and that's specifically for outplacement tuition. That means students with special education needs that we are unable to provide for in district. And so we send them to other special education environments that they can get the needs satisfied there. And so that came out to an overage of $625,000. In addition, we had an overage in the area of professional technical services, and that was where we have in district and out of district services related to our unanticipated special education students. And that was a total overage of $597,278. And of course, transportation is always as part of this because we transport our students from their place of home to where they are attending school. And so we did need to add on two additional special education bands that required wheelchair transport and also additional in district transportation routes that came to an overage of $248,152. In total, the total overage in special education alone was actually $1,470,430. But we do have a small revenue stream that comes in through our pre-K program that goes towards our special education line items to bring that remaining overage down to $1,380,430. Mike, we can go to the next slide. The second bucket, as I shared, were COVID-19 related expenses. And again, we are required and mandated to have, we were required and continue to be required to have all of our COVID-19 mitigation strategies in place so that we can have students in school. And we are one of, not all districts, who do have our students in school at this time. And those expenses came out to an overage of $1,454,178. Mike, we can go to the next slide there. So here's where, at the start of the year, there was an anticipated budget put together for COVID costs, and there was an anticipated thinking that we would spend $1,607,827. But in actuality, we needed more in order to satisfy all the requirements that we needed to meet. So in actual transportation costs, we had an overage of $81,848, which included things of adding a bus due to certain routes and making sure that we can socially distance, also bus sanitization costs, something that we have not had to do in the past. The next item that we had an overage in were actual nursing costs. So because of COVID-19, we had to increase the number of nurses that we had in our school. But in addition to that, when nurses were out, we needed to use temporary nursing agencies to fill in. And so because of that, contact tracing and quarantining, all of that happened really 24/7. It didn't matter whether it was a weekday or a weekend. And so we had an overage there of $63,871. In addition, the COVID-19 mitigating strategies required additional custodial overtime in order to do COVID-19-related cleaning, and there was an overage of $51,401 there. And then this one was not a foreseen cost, but one that all districts experienced. We have a food service program where we provide breakfast and lunch to all of our students here in Watertown. When schools went remote or when students were no longer purchasing food, our self-funded self-sustaining food service program no longer could self-sustain itself because our children were no longer purchasing food. With that, we also had executive orders that had us keep our staff on, and we were not able to lay off, not that we wanted to. And so with that, we had food salaries that would typically pay for itself through the self-funded program that would come over into our regular operating budget. And that was an overage of $495,662. In total, our COVID-19-related expenditures really were $2,306,900, but we have been receiving some relief from the government. And so our first stream of revenue was through the CRF CARES Act grant, where we received $319,375. We then received the Esser One Grant in the amount of $175,056. And then we do have the Esser Two Grant that we've received, a total of $352,000. And so taking those grant monies and putting them right towards the COVID-19 cost brings the total overage in COVID-19 expenditures to $1,454,178. Mike, we can go to the next slide. So with these two very exceptional, and I call them exceptional buckets of overages, because one, we did, we could foresee COVID-19, we could not always foresee the special education cost. So we had a double whammy this year of both buckets. The total appropriation request that I am putting before the town on behalf of the Board of Education is for a total of $2,834,608. Now with that being said, I would like to also say, as I mentioned, the federal and state grants that we are going to continue to receive between now and the next two years is that although the parameters are very tight on how we are to use those funds, those funds can be used towards special education-type costs and other costs that are related to COVID-19. So as the year moves forward, next year and the year after that, I look forward to working with the town to see how we can have funds work for our school district and also for our town as well. And if there are any questions this evening, myself as well for the education, we have to answer any of them. Thank you.
All right, we are now going to have a motion and a second to approve the amount before us. Once that's done, the public will be allowed to address the council and the Board of Ed and ask questions. We ask you, if you would please, to keep your comments to two minutes until everyone has had a chance to speak. And.
I move to authorize an appropriation in the amount of $2,834,608. I move to authorize an appropriation in the amount of $2,834,608 to the Board of Education fiscal year 2020-2021 budget for unanticipated overages and special education costs.
Do we have a second? Jeff Damaris has seconded for the secretary's information. Now, public, who would like to make the first comments? We have a microphone up front for anyone that would like to address us. There is a microphone up here. I hope it works better than this one does.
Hey, my name is David Guley. I live at 49 Farmdale Road. I've been a resident of Watertown for almost 40 years. And all I can say about the proposed transfer is that the numbers are breathtaking. Is the way I would describe them. I don't think I've ever seen a request for such a large amount of money with such a large miss. What you're asking the residents to do is to transfer about 7% of your budget from the general fund. And that's not monopoly money. That's money that the taxpayers of this town have to actually earn. I understand COVID, and I understand special education. And both of them had to be dealt with. But the amount by which you missed your projected budget is what's most breathtaking of all. I don't understand how as professionals, you can craft a budget and be off by that much. It's hard to understand. The special education budget, and I'm in favor of special education, my wife benefited from special education. But how many students, you didn't really give a full explanation of why the special education budget was overrun by so much. I mean, it's a huge amount. It's not just 5%. It's multitudes. So I'm not in favor of this because I think the amount of, the way the money was spent on COVID is, leaves a great question. It seems like COVID has become a password for budget busting. Okay, I read, and I understand that you implemented a freeze to try to save money. And what I suggest is that rather than to transfer the money from the general fund into the education budget, that you continue to implement that kind of freeze and that you save the money from the approved budget, that the budget that the voters just voted during the month of May. And I think with spending money on COVID, if for some reason the people here tonight approve this transfer, I think that there should be assurances given that any money, I mean literally any money that comes in from the state or from the feds to mitigate COVID should go right back into the general fund, not as you suggested, to be spent in the Board of Education budget. Because you're dipping into the till a little bit too much for my taste, and I would urge everybody here to vote no.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? We have one, and I will when everyone has spoken, sir.
Mitchell, 99 Norway Street. How many special ed students do we have that cost that much?
So we have a number of special education students in our district. However, for that particular overage, we can account for six to nine students. Six to nine students. Sorry, say that again.
Was it 16?
Oh, no, six, so below the number 10, between six to nine students. And our students are students who are currently outplaced at very high-costing outplacements. And that also has the tuition as part of that as well. In addition to that, there are in-service services that we provide our students that require additional support for our students.
What's the price we have?
We are handling it the way we're legally obligated to, sir, at this meeting. We are handling it the way we are legally obligated by our charter to handle it, and that's at this meeting. Four years ago, you might recall that we had overages in our health account because we're self-insured. And we had to take millions of dollars out of the general fund to pay those health costs. We were obligated to do that. This is similar to that in that we will have to earn and replace that money back by whatever grants or incomes we can.
It's just a big chunk that.
It's a very large.
It was a catastrophe and we didn't expect the building to come down or something like that.
Six to nine, and if I could just put a little bit more information to that. So each year, we do budget a little bit for unanticipated special education costs because all districts do face unanticipated costs. However, it is fairly exceptional to have that number of students come in with that high needs requirement. And so if we had two or three students come in or one or two, we have funds that we can figure out how to support those students. But when we have six and upwards to nine students with high costs, this is where our regular budgeting may not be able to cover all of that threshold.
Excuse me, sir, I'd like to, if everyone can hear me.
Excuse me, excuse me, the public is talking first round.
I'm sorry, I was going to respond to follow up with Dr. Villanueva.
No, please wait.
Can you hear? Oh, name's George Sinios. So just, I wanted to say I agree with the previous two gentlemen. I saw the numbers there, and they're astounding to hear such egregious amounts being requested. Again, with the COVID amount, it seems like, yeah, we understand that something won't predict. Have such an excessive amount is quite astounding. And especially needs, I know people, we all care about that situation. However, it sounds like for the number of people who are being outplaced, can you provide a per capita cost for the overages?
I can get back to you more specifically on per capita costs. But if I can speak perhaps a little bit to how we actually outplace our students. We have students sometimes that come to our district who are already outplaced from other districts that go straight to an outplacement. Sometimes we have students who we provide as many services here as possible, and then we get to a point where we can no longer provide those services and have to send them to the best possible facility that they can be at. So with that, again, I can get back to you with specific per capita costs. We do have a high percentage of special education students in our district. We are upwards of almost 30%, I believe. And I'm doing approximate numbers here because I can get something more specific. But even in one school itself, we can have over 400 students with special education needs.
Right, so those students, they're being, they're being educated within the school system. But it sounds like the bulk of the resources are being expended on outplacement. And that's, I mean, I have to question, is that really serving the community's needs? If it's six to nine people, less than 10 total people, what about all the other students who are, you know, that need higher educational needs on the other side? Like they want to go to the best colleges and universities. What kind of, you know, I haven't seen any overages regarding the upper education side of the courses, you know, whatever advanced placement courses. I mean, I don't even see requests for overages for that. So I guess my question would be, is that really serving the community such an advantage?
Sure, and that is a great question. And again, I use the word exceptional today. It is not common where we see something like a pandemic that happens once every 100 years and unanticipated special education costs of this nature come together at the same time in a single year. To your point of AP classes and things of that nature, absolutely. The way in which we budget is made so that we provide services for all of our students of all needs, not just students who have special education needs. But with that, to appropriately budget for special education will allow us to make sure that we have funding for all of our students, whether they're, you know, right through the middle of the road or exceptional and, you know, high-flying students as well. But here is an opportunity for us to really try to get our ship back and steady again. And again, this is an exceptional situation.
I understand it's exceptional, but I mean, other years past, I've heard of overages in the same category as before, certainly not in this great amount, but in the hundreds, thousands. So I understand you're saying, so 1.38 million, we saw $500,000 pass. So I guess I just want to say is, it seems like the problem is put in the wrong direction. Say, I'd like to see the per capita cost for, you know, students lost the entire board, you know, from the upper advanced placement to the middle college prep to this outplacement. Properly assess it and see if that's in the community's best interest.
Thank you. The next person that would like to address us, please come up.
Babo, 226 Beach Avenue. I just, I wasn't going to come up here and speak, but I just wanted to say that I understand. This is not, like, this isn't, it's not ideal. It's not something that should happen, but it did happen. And I feel it's our obligation, we're obligated to pay what we've spent. So yes, I know I've spoke to some people and questions about, well, how much is in the general fund? Where does this put us, you know, how does this make us vulnerable in different ways? And I think that some people should, like, maybe do some research and get a better understanding of how this is going to affect us, and it will affect our children. So I just felt like everyone was saying that, I, it's not ideal, but I feel like it is something that has to be done.
Thank you.
And I read this in the paper. I really have a problem with that. I'm not sure when this was known, who knew it, the town council knew it, whether the Board of Ed knew it. When you know these things, it's got to go in the paper right away. So if there was 3.8 million deficit, it had to go in the paper whenever you knew it. But you had to tell the people. And then you. And then you could try to figure out, you know, how to do this, how to get rid of it, save the million. You can't spring these things on us right at the end. Somebody has to know. I don't know if you look at month by month. I mean, that's what usually you do with a budget. You have a budget, here's your actuals. It looks like we're going to be off. You probably knew it in September, I would say. I don't know.
Thank you for allowing me to respond to that. So we did, we did know, especially the COVID-related expenditures. We estimated about a hundred and sixty, one point, one point six million at that point. We had a board meeting. It was, there was notification at all of our budget summary reports that we do quarterly and also in October when we knew what the estimated COVID expense was to keep the schools open and not be remote. And then there were notifications given to town council through town manager and the town chairwoman. And we did that multiple times as we knew it was getting bigger or growing. At the same time, we were also continually checking on what funds were going to be reimbursable and what weren't. And that was, that continually changed and was very fluid. As Dr. Villanueva mentioned, districts were told in the beginning that FEMA would reimburse seventy-five percent. So we were comfortable with that. We were comfortable being able to open the schools and keep children in the buildings. That didn't end up happening, and they ended up creating different, very criteria-based funding, of which we received some. But in terms of the newspapers and notifying the public outside of these Board of Education meetings, where we do announce it, or when we share information with the town council, I think there's new ways where we can do that more often. But we don't have control over what the newspapers present. We certainly share all the information with them. But we don't have the ability to dictate what either, you know, the Republican American or the Town Times decides to put in their newspaper.
Okay, so you did try to put this in back in January or December.
Anytime we have a meeting, we send them information. And also, if we're not sending them information, they're at the meetings, either virtually or in person. And it's, they choose what they decide to put into the newspaper. We don't have, we don't have control over that. But I do agree that there are new, additional ways that the Board of Education and the school districts can communicate in new ways as we become less dependent perhaps on the newspapers to get information out and not only share information at board meetings and town council meetings. I think there's other avenues that we can increase that communication on, but it has been an ongoing process. It was notified through the board meetings, and the town council was notified in writing and also through communications between itself and the.
Maybe we should have a special meeting back then. I don't know the answer. I really don't. I was definitely shocked at six students and one point four million dollars over special. I don't know the answer to that either. I don't know the rules.
I think Dr. Villanueva really explained it well, but there's a couple of things I just want to share on that. When six to nine students are either newly identified or they move into our district after the budget is passed. So students that we weren't previously providing those special education services to, either get newly identified by us or move into the district with those plans, we are legally obligated to continue whatever the plan was. So if their tuition is two hundred thousand dollars at a specialized school, we are obligated legally to pay that until we are, until a certain process is completed. And that's really.
I understand that. Other towns have the same issue.
They do. I just want to make sure you knew it was new students or newly identified students.
This seems outrageous. I feel, I feel for them.
I've never seen anything like it.
The only, the only question I have here, if this is voted no, what do we do?
If this is voted no, the impact to the school, really to the town next year, our funding would decrease from the state. We'd lose money.
So if this is not passed tonight, what happens?
The money that the state pays the town of Watertown would decrease. We have no idea how much it will decrease.
I mean, I, me personally, I don't want to spend the money. I don't think we got the choice. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. Chris Ciracino, thirty-one Farmville Road. Just a couple of questions. Hey, I'm not really down for this. Number two. It said in the paper that you knew early on in the year that there was going to be this deficit. Is that correct?
It's correct. So at the start of the school, yep.
Okay, just to, had we maybe been public with that prior to referendum? Do you think that would have maybe had an effect on our referendum for the budgets coming up? Had people known that this was also at stake? It's just kind of, it's just kind of bad to see that all of a sudden, it's like trying to bring it around the back door without being public with it.
Sure, and definitely not any backdoor happening here. Right from the start of the school year, the one point six million dollars for COVID was right out there. And there was not any confirmed stream of funding, so that in itself was straight out of the gate. The special education costs were talked several times over Board of Education meetings publicly from well before the referendum, because those costs were there. So I think probably January, even February. So I started just at the last week of January and within the first couple of weeks, you know, getting the numbers together, was able to get somewhat of a total. And that's where the freeze came from. And again, that freeze is very difficult. Immediately, we talked about potential layoffs because of the large number. But again, executive orders had us beholden to making sure that we kept our employees' goal. It's not something that I'd like to do in laying anybody off, but it was something that we certainly were very carefully thinking about. In addition to that, because it was known early on, you know, that freeze allowed us to cost cut by a million dollars. And that cost cut of a million dollars is not, we found free money. It was very difficult. Our schools were not able to, you know, buy supplies. I was asking them to not buy staples, not buy paper for kindergarten classes. In addition to that, you know, just making, making sure that everybody knew that this deficit was here was definitely a part of it. And so it didn't just come around now for a referendum. It has always been there, even since the start. Thank you.
This rose. My question was, you said that we stand to lose a particular amount of money. That's true.
Right.
But you don't know that amount.
No, because I don't believe we know what the total funding is going to be to the school department for next year. I don't know that it's been set by the state budget yet.
So you really can't make that confidently, that comment confidently?
Oh, yeah, we, we know that. We know if, we know if, but if a budget is not balanced at the end of the year, that your funding changes, our bond rating will also change.
Name is Allison Demarest, one sixteen Jason Avenue. I know some of you see me coming and get nervous, but I'll talk more than two minutes. I'm the PTO president at John Trumble. I spoke at the referendum meeting. And of course, you know, at the last budget meeting when we were recognized, we talked, or at the last Board of Ed meeting, I should say, we talked about this deficit and that it's a scary thing. You know, we fought really hard for our educators in our schools to vote for more money for next year. And then we have to go back and ask for two point eight million dollars. With COVID, it's an unexpected thing, and it's obligations and laws that we have to abide to. And that is out of our control. We put our children into schools in September, and not a lot of regions and school districts can say that. But I can say first and foremost, with a second grader and a third grader, having them in school was probably the best thing for them. And I know that for a fact, socially, educationally, period. They learn best when they're in school. And we were one of those districts, and I go to work, and I'm like, hey, my kids have been in school since September. They're like, wow, that's great. I've been struggling through second grade math since September. And I don't think they learned a lot because they're at my dining room table. So I can just say that I applaud Watertown for affording our students the opportunity to be in school with their teachers and their peers since September. Second of all, we move on to what we had discussed at the referendum, including a non-lapsing account. Had we had one, which we do not, we could have saved upwards of a half a million dollars at this point, which other towns and districts have used to offset COVID expenses. So if we had planned ahead, we might not be in this boat. And I think that that's something that we could maybe look forward, you know, look, look upon in the future. You know, offset the fire department expenses, offset police department expenses, so that we're not draining our town and asking our citizens to spend the tax money to offset these outrageous and unexpected expenses. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else that would like to address us? Is there someone else?
Norway Street. The question I think is on everybody's mind, why wasn't this included with the regular budget last week? Why did it take another week to show up? Why wasn't this included in last week's vote on the budget? Rather than all of a sudden we owe three million dollars out of, besides our regular school budget? I think that's the question I meant to ask the first time. You didn't, you know, it's like all of a sudden, this is, this is here, but it's been going on for fifteen months?
So I hope that my answer will answer your question. So for next year's budget, because the FY twenty-one and the FY twenty-two budgets are separate budgets, you will see that we had a three point something percent increase. That is because of the large special education cost, and I have folded that into next year's budget for our school district in order to appropriately fund for next year. For this year's FY twenty-one budget, this deficit cannot carry over into next year's budget. But with that, the sentiment of cutting through our, our faculty, I've already gone through layoffs of a number of people in preparation for next year. In addition, also increasing those special education budget lines for next year so that this doesn't happen again, or at least to try our best to mitigate this from happening as severely as it has happened this year.
My question, I didn't know all this, coming into the year, why wasn't it included as it? Now we have an extra two million, or three hundred thousand, whatever, that came up extra. We need that to pay bills. I mean, that would have been, put it in the budget, let the people vote on it instead of say, okay, now all of a sudden we owe another three million dollars. We would have known going, going ahead what the bill was rather than be surprised, you owe three million dollars more, you know?
Let me, let me try and, and address your concerns, sir.
No, that, it's, you know, I don't think it's a hard question. Last fifteen months, right?
No, not fifteen months.
I mean, there was all this extra cost coming into this year. So my question is, why wasn't it included in the education budget or put it as an extra one? You know, there's our education budget. Now here's, this would come in extra because of all the COVID and school closings, openings and all this other stuff.
Right, so this wasn't known coming into the year. This is costs that occurred this year, this year. So at, sorry, after the budget had already passed in FY twenty. So when FY twenty budget had already passed, so that.
It just went by last week.
No, that was the, that is, that was the FY twenty-two budget that you're referring to. So these costs happened this year after two years ago this budget had already passed. And so these are unanticipated costs that happened throughout this year. But in preparation for next year, I've made the budget next year to help absorb anything that may happen of this nature.
I don't feel like you're answering my question though. I realize you're, okay, we're talking about this company's budget, but you could still put it, there's a line item on this year, you know, what's going on this year. Rather than wait a week and say, hey, surprise, you owe another three million dollars, you know?
Excuse me, sir. Let me try and, and help a little bit if I can.
I'm a little bit slow when it comes to stuff like that.
No, you're not. It's, it's a complicated procedure that we have to follow. Our year runs July one to June thirtieth. Anything we spent after July one till the end of this month has to be paid in that timeframe. It cannot be paid in the budget you just passed. That starts July one. So you cannot move expenses from one year to another year. No, they're from the current year we're in. The money before you tonight to approve is for the current school year we're in. No, no, we're talking twenty to twenty-one. We're talking the current school year. This money is needed to balance the year that ends in just a couple of weeks. We can't put it in next year's budget. You're not allowed to do that.
One thing that may be a possible solution in the future for the town and for the Board of Education to look at is a non-lapsing fund, which ultimately, as you're suggesting, if there is anything that's left over in a year, we can put towards that non-lapsing fund. And when circumstances like this arise, those monies are put aside so that we can draw on that account. We don't have one of those at this time, so that's something that will take some time and effort to have discussions into the future. But that is a possibility that would go along with what you're saying now.
It's something along the lines, if I said that about ten, fifteen years ago. Get extra money dollars for one of the town departments. They don't use it all, doesn't go back at the stage that it fills up interest for the whole of the year. I tried to tell them, I used to work in hospitals, I tried to tell them that, but they couldn't do that. They have to pull all the money they get, regardless of what they spend it on. It would be handy just to, oh, we don't get hit with this again. It still doesn't make sense to me. It should have been put in, not necessarily in the budget, but as an extra aside, we need to pay that from last year rather than.
And you are correct. Other towns did, who do have non-lapsing accounts, did drain, basically drained their accounts this year in order to help offset their COVID costs. So that is a viable suggestion that we should pursue.
Thank you for your pleasant interview. I get a little hostile sometimes. I apologize if I do.
I thank you for your questions. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that would like to talk with us this evening? I'm sorry. Yes, you do have to get up. Is there anyone else? Okay, we can now have any Board of Ed member and council member that would like to address the issue speak. Is there anyone over there that would like to talk? I think you have to give your name for the record, if you would.
Kathy Rinaldi, Board of Ed member. I just want to say, I do understand this is a large amount, and I understand that it's hard for everybody to take in. But for many, many years, our budgets were cut, the Board of Ed budgets were cut twice, sometimes three times. And we would start a new school year off with not even an increase. And we kind of made everything work in a very, very lean budget. This is not something that we anticipated. This isn't something that we expected. So, you know, I just think we need to look at that and remember how we've, how we've always managed on a very lean budget in the past and never came back and asked for money for things.
Good evening. Rob Minkowski, Board of Ed member. I would just like to reiterate the fact that, first of all, the expenses incurred that are being presented to you tonight were not discretionary. The large bulk of this were legally obligated to do. Special education, we are legally obligated to fund in full the services that are designated for those students. The governor, through his executive orders, had certain requirements for Board of Education districts and towns that we had to abide by. There were contracts that we had to pay on that we weren't using. For example, that we weren't using. For example, transportation. There were, there were services that we had to continue to offer such as our food services, despite the fact that as Dr. Villanueva outlined, the revenue stream was significantly impacted because of school, students not being in school, not buying lunches, things like that. So I, I want to remind everyone, yes, we realize, you know, having a large deficit at the end of the year is certainly not the way to do business. And this is certainly not the way we do business. But when you're faced with a pandemic in the way that we are, or were, and you're faced with the unanticipated special education costs where to, to kind of enhance further, you know, we go through the referendum cycle, right? A budget's passed in May. The fiscal year begins July 1, as either Mrs. Crowdie or Dr. Villanueva outline. If a student moves into the district or is identified as having special education needs on July 2, we are legally obligated to fund that education in its entirety. And so, you know, as a school district and as a board, we rely on the expertise of our staff to identify those students early. We draw on their expertise to identify trends and to anticipate that in the development of upcoming budgets. It's our goal to plan ahead so that we don't have these unanticipated costs. Regretfully, when you have a large number that come in after the budget sets or are identified for services, we have to follow them. So, you know, I appreciate everybody coming out and, and your feedback. We definitely want to find other ways and new ways to ensure that the community is engaged and kept up to date. We look forward for your feedback on that and appreciate you all coming out tonight.
Are there council members that would like to comment? I believe Mr. Demarest is coming down.
Hello? I've been watching everybody turn the mic on and I forgot to do it when I came up. Question. I think this is like, this was sort of asked before, but I think I want to elaborate maybe a little more information on it. What are the consequences to the town? If we don't pass this? I know Mary Ann, you mentioned about the, the consequences for education funding from the state, but beyond that, what happens? What do we looking at in terms of impact on the town in other ways?
There is nothing else other than the fact that we, our bond rating goes down. We have several projects that we're looking at relative to bonding in the future that would have a great impact. But I think the big thing is the amount of money that comes to the town for education would be drastically reduced. Now, I don't know what the figure is. We don't even know what the figure is going to be from the state to the education department next year yet. So how much that will decrease, we've never had this happen before. So we're in a, a whole new position.
As far as the 2.8 million dollars, if we don't send it over from the general fund to the Board of Education, what does the Board of Education then do? This could be too anybody up there. What's this? What do they do?
Can I just add one thing? My understanding is if we vote tonight to transfer the funds to the Board of Ed or we say no, we'll pay some legal bills. I guess what? The town is still obligated to pay these bills.
So in either case, we're going to have to pay the 2.8 million dollars to cover this regardless of the vote because we'll be legally obligated or essentially on the hook to do that. But a vote for no would also include legal fees from both litigants to pay in. And as you mentioned, Mary Ann, the drop in our bond rating could have significant impact on the projects that we need to do. And we know that we have some very important projects we're looking at. But if we have a lower bond rating, that will affect our ability to borrow, it will affect the rate at which we have to pay to borrow. And it could affect what projects get done. So we may not be able to do a senior center like we wanted to do, or a police department, or a latter two, which has been needed, the fire department says they need. So we may not like the idea of having to put this 2.8 million dollars from our general fund to cover this expense, which we are legally obligated to pay. These expenses are not expenses that were from frivolous spending. This was expenses that came out because of legal obligations that the Board of Education had to the students and because of COVID expenses, which we did not have enough resources to cover. And if we don't do that, we will end up voting yes to do that. We will end up having to do it anyway through legal proceedings that will cost additional funds. So we may not like this. I don't like the idea of having to do it this way. I don't think anybody on the stage has, wants to do it this way. I don't think anybody in this room wants to do it this way, or anyone who lives in the town. But we talked about the idea of fiscal responsibility. Well, this is where, this is where it comes down to the rubber meeting the road. This is the responsible thing to do, whether we like it or not, whether, whether it's something that is desirable for us, whether it impacts us in the short term. If we don't, the impact can go far beyond just tonight's proceeding. Thank you.
First, I'd like to say that me and Jeff, we don't always agree on things, but I don't think I could say it any better than what you just did. As I mentioned, the town itself, Board of Thank you. Much better. What I was saying is that I can't say it nearly as well as Jeff just did, but as I mentioned earlier, I mean, the town itself is legally obligated. If we give the Board of Ed and they say, okay, we're paying it, we're good. At the end of the day, the bills have to be paid. No one, no one here wants to be here tonight. No one wants to write a check for 2.8 plus million. But unfortunately, that is where we're at. And to move forward, a vote for yes is what has to happen. I mean, one of the first people that came up, there was some clapping and stuff. I mean, I could tell half of the room was for, half of the room was against, which makes a meeting like this very, very difficult for us. Like I said, no one wants to be in this situation. The Board of Ed and the superintendent touched on a couple of the questions I had, but I just want to reiterate them. One is have proper steps been put into place to at least help prevent a situation like this in the future? I know the situation we're in. I mean, we got hit left, right, center with many different obstacles over the last year, year and a half. I just want to make sure that there's additional steps put forward. If it's the Board of Ed, it's superintendent, people in the finance department, whoever it might be to prevent overages like this in the future.
Yes. So I can speak to a couple of programming pieces as well as just some processes and protocols that we're also working on. One, again, you heard tonight about large costs due to outplacement. Bringing our children back from outplacement, back into in district programs is not only cost saving, but also returning our students to their home community. And that is very important for us. And it has, it's a journey that the Board of Education has been on for the past few years. And we continue to grow that. So we are growing a program inside the high school now to try to invite some of our students back from outplacements. In addition, we are trying our best to appropriately fund special education lines for next year so that we're not starting low and having to catch up and take on unanticipated costs. But that if we are as close to appropriately funded and then we have unanticipated costs, we can gauge that difference better. In addition to that, in just our overall central office workings of just how processes and protocols are flowing, we are doing a deep dive into what our standard operating procedures are as well as just our checks and balances of everything. And so certainly personally for myself, every single one of my fingers are right in there trying to make sure that everything is going smoothly and as transparently as possible.
Another question. I know we have this appropriation a few years back, both the Board of Ed and the town had issues with health insurance. Other than these two topics, do you recall the last time you guys had to come back for a significant amount of money after the budget? I, I don't recall any since I've been lived it too, that they always come back looking for more, but um seven, eight years and I don't recall any other that year.
That, that is the case, at least in the last eight years that I've been involved, even six years, and we haven't had to come back for anything like this. I do want to say that, you know, we, as Kathy and Rob and Dr. Villanueva expressed, none of us want to be in this position, but I am very, very confident in the abilities of our district, our business office, especially with the process and protocols that Dr. Villanueva has put in place. That, and the new initiatives to be better communicative and find new ways to bring these issues forward to the public, that we won't find ourselves in this situation. I do, you know, we have talked to the town council in years past about creating non-lapsing fund. I'm hope, I'm hoping that's a direction that we can go in to help mitigate any future emergency situations like this. But, you know, I appreciate you echoing what Jeff said because I think we're all in the same cage.
My last question kind of alluded to this answer, but are you guys fairly confident? Never be 100% sure that the current budget that was just voted in, that from your current expectations, it'll be enough to cover the COVID expenses, special education expenses and most other things that could come up in the next, or I know you can't be 100% sure, but are you fairly
Thank you. Thank you for prefacing it with, we can't be 100% sure, but yes, we budgeted as close. It, it's a very tight budget and I've asked our entire district to really tighten the belt. However, it is a budget that will get us to where we need to get to by the end of the year with the right side of the boat being the right way up. With that being said, I do think we have a journey over the next few years to continue growing a budget, not necessarily in monetary dollars, by growing away of our programs so that we can have students return back to our district so that we can think of programs that we can keep in-house so that we don't have to always go outside for those services. And that will take time and over the years that will show us financial benefits as well.
If, do any of the council members down front here want to address this at all? I will make just one or two quick comments. I'm a senior citizen. I understand tax increases and unanticipated costs. And I think one of the things that's annoyed me most about this whole scenario is the fact that the reimbursement coming to the town does not reimburse us for the costs we incurred. I don't know if you realize that we are getting money back, but it's not money that's going to pay for the cleaning of the schools or the transportation contract that we had to continue to pay. It's another one of those unfunded mandates that we're dealing with. A lot of rules and regulations, but no money to help us for the costs that are incurred. One of our council members asked the superintendent for a copy of the COVID regulations that the school department was required to follow. I printed those out today on my computer. There were 19 pages of regulations. So many rules. School buses that didn't run, but you still have to pay the contract. Meals that you have to provide students, but students not paying for anything. So many, many costs that we've never had before just kept adding up. And we knew as the year was progressing that the, the numbers were high. But we couldn't come to you a month ago, two months ago, three months ago or more and tell you what the number was because we didn't know. We didn't know what the final number was until the Board of Ed brought in auditors in the last month and did an audit and a projection on the cost to the end of the year. And that's the figure we had to have in order to come to you. So if we came to you a month ago, the number wouldn't have been right. We tried to do the right thing to give you all the information that we could to help you make your decision. And none of us want to be here, just like everybody else has said. At this point, we've had a motion, a second discussion, and it's time for a vote. Could we block that very bright light that's shining in my face? Thank you kindly. I think we'll ask those that are in favor of passing the motion to raise your hands. Yeah, I think so. Mr. Vitale, would you come over on that side of the room for us? And Mr. Demarest, would you count over there, this far side? Yeah, get to center if you would. Okay. Please put your hands down if you would. Thank you kindly. Those that are opposed, raise your hand. Please come, just to be on the safe side. The motion passes.
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second to adjourn? All those in favor, please say aye.